Welcome. I'd like to call to order this work session of the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees. We'll start as usual by going around introducing ourselves, and if you care to share what you're reading, please do. Jamie, would you start us off?
My name is Jamie Burkhart, and I am reading with my daughter right now, The Wild Robot.
I'm Chris Harrison, and I'm reading The List by Patricia Forday.
And I'm John Walsh. I'm trying to find what I'm reading. I'm reading a biography of Dorothy Day, but I can't find, oh, by John Lowry and Blythe Randolph.
I'm Marilyn Wood, and I am reading a book called I've Got Sand in All the Wrong Places. It's by Lisa Scottaline and her daughter. This is a nonfiction work.
Hi, I'm Fred Reissinger. I'm reading the book called Rage, R-A-G-E, by Bob Woodward.
I'm Jackie Moser, and I'm reading The Promised Land by Barack Obama.
Thank you, everyone. We have a number of year-end things to review. And first is 2021 documents, our holiday schedule, pay, different schedules, calendars.
Good evening. So we'll start off with the library closing schedule. Are there any questions about that? This, this year, we seem to have a normal year. And then the pay schedule, we're back to 26 pays. And the wage and salary schedule, this one, we have the resolution. If you'd like me to read that, I can do so, or just touch base on the high points here.
Yeah, could you summarize the, unless anyone else would like it read, summarize the, the changes?
Okay. So primarily, we're approving the documents I just mentioned, including, and the wage and salary schedule, which we wish to adjust the maximums for pay grade three through eight by increasing the maximum of 50% from minimum to 60% from minimum based on market rates. And then we wish to also provide a cost of living increase, which falls within the amount budgeted in, as we have for the last few years. We'd like the board to approve a 75% or 2.75% increment, increase per hour, whichever is higher, subject to wage and salary schedule maximums. And this applies to all staff that are employed as of December 20th. And the pay periods between, I think I have the wrong, wrong one that I brought with me. I had two out, sorry. Oh, no, here it is. And the, the pay periods apply to, from January 15th, 2020, and includes the pay periods between December 21st, 2020, and ending just January 3rd, 2021.
Does cover some dates that are in 2020. I'm going to add just a couple of other things to what Kyle said. So in terms of the closed, library closing schedule for next year, it mimics what we've done in the past in terms of the dates closed for holidays. The difference in 2021, though, is that we're not planning on having a, a staff day as we did this year because obviously COVID's, we typically do that in the spring or in early, or in February, and I don't think that's going to be a possibility for us getting together in a large group. So we haven't added that. So there's a, there is one fewer holiday. Actually, as Kyle mentioned, 26 pay periods instead of 27. And the one change, the wage and salary schedule, I'm going to make one change to what Kyle said. It's actually a 2% increase on minimums. And then the 60% on the maximums is, is, is for pay grades three through eight, which is the same as we did this year. It's just, it is an increase over what the current schedule is because there was an increase in the minimums.
I have a question on page four. And it, I think it may just be mistyped. But on the, the last line of the one, two, three, fourth paragraph, it says the effective first pay date of 2021, and it's dated 2020.
Yeah, that's.
Those dates are a year off.
Okay.
Because the last one should be January 3rd, 2022.
Yes.
Correct.
All three of those years are a year behind.
Well, the, the December date is correct.
Correct. It's the January 2021.
So the January is, the year needs adjusted.
Okay.
We can update that quickly.
Okay.
Get that done.
Yeah, I, I was just.
Thank you. That's why I was reading it and I'm like.
I didn't know, I thought, well, maybe we're doing something.
Was it?
Retroactively.
That didn't sound right. Okay.
So both Januaries need to go?
Just one.
No, just January 15th, 2020. Should be January 15th, 2021.
No, I think that January, the last one is also 22, like John said.
No, it isn't. Next year is 21.
Because next year is 21.
Right. But it includes the pay period starting this December.
Oh, that's the pay period.
It is the pay period. So we're not looking at the yeas. Yes, got it. Thank you.
Yeah, it's unusual to have that last.
Yeah, got it.
The pay period include, and end on the 15th. That's far in the year, it feels like.
But the first one, January 15th, should be 2021 as opposed to 2020.
And we don't approve that till next week.
That's correct. That's correct.
A week to fix it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then are we on the fee schedule?
Yes, I think that's the next thing. So the fee schedule, there, there are a couple of changes that related to a policy that we're going to bring toward, forward as well. So if we approve the policy that, that is changing what our fee option program is for, for both volunteers and for, for children, which is currently called Read It Off, we're going to do two things. We're combining that somewhat, and we're also increasing the amount, which was $5 previously, and it will be 10 instead. And so it's called Care Fee Option Program, and it's for all ages, not just children. And then, Plaque Cards was not on here, I noticed, as I was updating this, this time. So it should be. It's just part of the fee schedule. And then it's just a, a little bit of a change in how we're describing the subscription card. But other fees remain the same.
Any questions on that one? And then our board meeting calendar.
Which follows the same pattern as, as we have been. The third Wednesday of the month, there, in fact, we don't even have a March change because of IU's schedule is not going to impact spring break.
There is no spring break.
There is no spring break. So the only thing that is subject to change as we go forward would be work sessions. And of course, whether or not we actually hold them in this room, which is a question that I do have for you that's somewhat related, and that is whether or not you would like to hold our meeting next week via Zoom as opposed to in-person.
And when we're testing today to see if we can do public comment?
What you see, well, actually, it's a little bit different. So what we're testing today is the ability to meet in person as well as to have meetings for the public or perhaps as a board member via Zoom. And this is what it will look like to us with the people. You can see both us as well as those who are participating on Zoom. And we're working through anything that we might need to figure out in terms of how, when it comes time to public comment, how we would actually have people have the ability to speak or ask questions. So CATS has been working, and this is great. This is certainly one of those things that I think that once the pandemic is over, people have really learned to, and have participated in, in community meetings now in a way that they didn't do before, and I'm sure that they're going to want to continue to do that. So this is just new technology that's going to be available to us. Now, in terms of the, the, us having a Zoom meeting next week, we won't be in the room publicly. It will just be Zoom. We would all be via online Zoom. So we wouldn't have this.
We'd be at home.
We'd be at home.
I have mixed feelings about that. I have been to three Zoom meetings in four days.
Mm-hmm.
And there are some things that are very good about that. And, but sometimes I like real meetings with real people. I'm not so sure, I'm not so sure it's the best thing to do, but I'm willing to give it a try, I reckon.
And with this setup, is it an option to meet, you know, have an in-person meeting, and those who choose to participate over Zoom could do that?
Yes.
Obviously, we need other staff here if we do it in person.
That's correct. We would still need CATS staff here.
I would suggest that we, as a board, determine not to have two different types of formats. I'm all for Zoom in these times.
The, the state is still allowing boards to meet in that way. The difference is that, obviously, without being here, we don't see one another in the same way to do presentations, et cetera. And each vote would be taken by roll call.
I'm really flexible either way.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I like coming in person, but I also, you know, with everything going on, I think, and because some board members are more comfortable online, and it's not just us who have, would come in, but we'd need other staff to support us. I would suggest we do it online in December and then see how things are going, I mean, for next week, and then see how things are going in the new year at that point. But, so.
Okay. Well, then we will plan on a Zoom meeting for the December 16th meeting next week.
So are we done with the 2021?
Yes.
Kind of calendar, schedule, fee schedule? So we have the esteemed Michael White to come talk to us about our annual CATS contracts.
Thanks, John. It's good to see all of you. And I'll be brief. Tonight, we have the Ellisville contract, and it's, it's one of the three external contracts with the governmental entities that we work with. And it represents a, a 4% increase over the funding that we have this year. And that's per the, the maximum levy growth quotient, which changed from the assessed value growth quotient. Pretty much same thing to me, probably to Gary. It's, it's a little bit different, but yeah, 4%, 4%. So it's, it's identical to the contract from previous year, except the 4% increase.
Is that, is that a decrease or increase?
No, it's an increase.
Oh, okay.
Increase, 4% increase.
Great.
And any questions? Happy to answer those.
Are we still waiting on, or no, that's it? Okay, so that's just Ellisville.
Yeah, the city and the county contracts, we're hoping they'll be here in January.
Okay. No questions? Well, that's great with the increase. And then a new MOU with WFHB?
And again, this is identical to the, the same one that we signed last year, and this just continues to codify the relationship we've had with Community Radio WFHB since 2009. And this is for the Cooperative News Project that covers all of the governmental meetings that CATS covers every week. And WFHB reviews all those meetings, then creates a script for us. And through, through doing this cooperative project, and to my knowledge, it's the only one like it in the country, CATS gets this wonderful program to, to show basically everything we do in a week. But then also, Community Radio WFHB also gets to utilize these same stories. So we like to think that it's a wonderful way to sort of share governmental transparency, just so everybody has every opportunity to learn what's going on in local governmental meetings. It's worked out very well.
How many years now have we been doing this?
Well, since, since 09, I believe. So that would be, I guess, what is that, 11 years? About to be 12.
Any questions on the FHB? Has, has that workflow changed much with the pandemic, or is it mostly done over the internet?
We, we went and talked to hiatus briefly, trying, you know, until we figured out that we could actually do this safely. And, you know, we, we continue to kind of nudge, you know, how, how we do it in the studios. But it's, we're sort of back in business with the show, and it seems to be working very well. And at another juncture, I'll, I'll tell you about where, where that show, we're, we're going to be doing some modifications to that show in the coming year. But I'm trying to be brief just now.
And then we can move on to the update to the CATS government meeting coverage guidelines?
And, and this, we just added a, a couple of, of clauses. One, you know, given these really interesting times, that we, we, when we send a crew out to a meeting, so far, all of the entities have been, been wonderful. And, you know, everyone has been, you know, using masks, and the environment has been very friendly. But there isn't 100% assurance of that. So the first of those two clauses basically allows our crews, if they're there, and they're, they're seeing behaviors that are not safe, then they can contact, contact me, contact Martin, contact any of the managers at CATS, and then we will make a very quick determination whether to continue or not continue. This has not come up. This is just one of those sort of if things. And so we're hoping we would never have to make that decision because we, that's the last thing we ever want to do is to cancel a meeting. The second of the, the two clauses, because CATS never edits anything in a governmental meeting, it's always gavel-to-gavel coverage. Nothing is edited out. But with the advent and necessity of Zoom meetings, the Zoom bombing has occurred. And at CATS meeting last Friday, I asked how many of the staff had been exposed to that kind of content, and they, they all raised their hands that they, they'd seen a variety of, of, of things they would rather not seen. So what this second clause does is this basically, when the board approves this, which if the board does, establishes officially that we can trim these offending sections out if and when they occur. And I should add, those have gotten a lot better since the earlier days of Zoom. And then those would be put aside, and then the, the meeting would be then edited back together. Sorry about that. I'm wearing these gloves. Not used to it. The, we would keep any sort of offending footage, just in case it would be egregious enough that there might need to be some kind of legal action by some entity. We are not in that sort of position. But certainly, there has been sexual content and some, some neo-Nazi stuff. And, yeah, so we, we, we definitely are in the transparency business, and we don't, we're uncomfortable editing anything out. But in this case, we think it's important because these meetings, you know, they may be seen 100 years from now. They could be.
I have a question.
Yes, of course.
In the event of transparency and freedom of information, and knowing that it's not regular to edit, understanding the need to do so if it comes about, would there be any type of disclaimer letting the public know that that had happened? That, that there, was a piece edited from the video?
Yes. And mu- much as if we've had technical difficulties, there, there should be a slate on the front of the meeting that says due to, you know, malicious content from, I don't have the words on me right now, but there would be a slate on the head of the meeting that would say, due to this, the meeting has been altered, but the meeting is presented in its entirety. So something like that.
Good question.
Yeah, really good question.
Questions on this?
Well, those seem like the types of changes one needs to make these days, so. Well, we don't want to make those changes without getting the, you know, the board's approval, because it's, you know, it's a pretty, we, we take this really, really seriously. You know, we, we have been, in, in years past, sometimes members of a, of a meeting that we'd be covering would say, whoa, we want you to turn the cameras off now. It's like, no, we don't do that. We never do that. So in the, in this case, under these very special circumstances, we think this is, it's an important, it's an important sort of change to make. And hopefully, we won't have to, to make it because I spoke with Martin about this last week. And the folks that are running the Zoom meetings, they are, they're doing a much, much tighter job. So they're, you know, there hasn't been any of the Zoom bombing for a little while. So, so that's good, too.
I do, this just occurs to me, if it was a live meeting and someone was, you know, protesting, and they're, you know, a streaker ran through the camera, or somebody, you know, took their clothes off, or held up a neo-Nazi sign, would that be edited out in the same way? And then if not, how would you, you know?
And I'm, and again, I'm trying to be really brief here. There's, in terms of the constitutionality of things, and again, very brief, public meetings like this, these, there's, there's a public forum, which is essentially the soapbox. This is a limited public forum. So the people running the meeting, basically, they can have members of the audience come and speak. They're, they're not obligated to. They're not obligated to have any of the public speak. That's the sort of, it's, it's courtesy. It's a limited public forum. And so were, let's say, in the case of, of a streaker with a neo-Nazi sign, which is a remarkable notion, were that to occur, and the, the chair of the meeting not gavel out of the meeting, we would have that in the meeting. And we would probably have a warning on the front that says that, you know, there's, there's nudity in this meeting. So this, to me, is different than this external content that is not under the control of the chair of a meeting that just, you know, literally bombs, bombs the meeting. So that, to me, would be those, I, I hope, I hope I explained that.
No, you did. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Michael. And Gary's going to give us a summary of the 2021 agreement with El Centro. And I don't believe there are any substantial changes. It's just a date update. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. That's another, seems like it may have started around the same time as the FHB. You know, it's been a long time now. Another successful partnership. Any questions on the 2021 agreement with El Centro? Thank you, Gary. And Chris Jackson is going to talk about our van replacement bid.
Hi, I'm Chris Jackson. I'm the Special Audiences Strategist here at the library. As you know, you approved our request for proposals that went out at the end of October. We had five vendors bid on the project, and we have a very clear winner, as summarized in the report from our consultant. One vendor came in at a much lower price than the others. And personally, I'm happy to say this is the one vendor that made a proposal that I have firsthand knowledge with. They built the bookmobile before our current bookmobile. I wasn't involved in outreach during the acquisition of that vehicle, but I drove it for some seven or eight years before it was replaced by our current vehicle. I've also toured their facility. They used to host an annual conference of outreach librarianship in Columbus, Ohio, where their facility is located. So I have some firsthand knowledge of them, which is all extremely positive. So the fact that they are significantly lower than the other proposals, plus a known entity with a very strong track record in building library vehicles, makes me feel very comfortable with them being the, the top choice. If there are any questions about the, the process, or about that vendor, or whether or not we should go with them, I'd be happy to, to try my best answer.
Was this bid, were, were they in line with your expectations?
So this bid, the one bid, what, from, from Farber Specialty Vehicles, the company that came in lowest, it was significantly lower than we anticipated. There was one bid that actually had a lower dollar figure, but that's because that vendor didn't include the base vehicle. They wanted us to buy the Sprinter van at our expense. And then the, the total that they came up with was to do the upfitting process to turn the, the stripped-down cargo van into the library cart-hauler van. The Farber proposal was just not, was not that much higher than that proposal. So we were actually a little bit concerned that they had made a mistake. So our consultant double-checked with them, and they said, no, that's, that's the price that we want to come in at. They do more of these vehicles for libraries than anybody else, and I don't know if they get a better price on the base vehicle. But they did say that they anticipate some slowness in their production schedule, so that might have explained why they were a little bit more aggressive. I believe they were also the only vendor who certified, the, the vehicle is made by, by Mercedes-Demler, and they are certified under a Demler Upfitter Program. So they have a lot of experience with these vehicles. And I can't anticipate the, I, I don't know why they came in so much lower, but it certainly is a, a positive thing to be saving maybe $20,000 over what we anticipated.
So this was in the 2021 budget?
It is part of our bond.
Okay. Well, great. Any questions for Chris on the van?
I'm just curious, did any of the other list references, like they've done a, a big list of references of different public libraries?
Yes, several of them have worked with, with libraries before. I know Summit and Matthews are well-established in the, in the library business. So we, you know, th- those were things we would take into consideration, but the price differential was, was so much that, and we did actually, during the process of writing our specifications, we talked to another library. This was prior to the RFB even being issued. But another library who had gone with a lot of the same equipment, theirs ended up being a Farber vehicle, and, and they told us they were very pleased with it. So, and yeah, like I said, that was before even we, we issued the, the RFP.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Next, we're on item eight, Proposed Internet and Computer Use Policy.
This is just an annual review that we are required to do by the state. And so there are very minor changes in this, just a couple of, of words, and it remains the same otherwise.
Any questions on this? Okay. Then Josh, Josh Wolfe is going to summarize the changes to circulation and borrowing policy.
And his faithful sidekick, Kevin McDowell, I'll actually lead off, as we talk about Read It Off, which we hope to call, rename the Care Fee Program. I want to paint a picture for you. In the last five to six years, working in the new teen space, where we serve 12- to 19-year-olds, and happily sign up, many of our teen patrons who have difficulties with their accounts for the Read It Off program, where in the past, they would read a book and come back and talk to us about it, and receive a $5 wave towards their fees on their card. And how disappointing it was, whenever I was talking to an 18- or a 19-year-old who had the same problems with their accounts, and could not join the program because the program stopped at 17. And I never understood why that was, and I talked about it with many of my colleagues, not to say that I'm the impetus for this change. But that just paints the picture of how this really great program, for such a long time, 12 years, stopped at the age of 17. And so we are excited to be here today to talk about changes in this program. in this program. And the fine free policy that was presented to you back in February also left the door open for expanding Read It Off, and it was always the intent for us to come back once we had some time to do so. That's why we're here today. Interestingly, as meeting minutes were reviewed for when Read It Off first came, first was being designed back in 2008, meeting notes were found where the initial intention was to expand that program anyway. And so, for 12 years, the Read It Off program has been a way for children up to 17 years old to free their library cards by both building a successful checkout record, and maybe more importantly, developing relationships with library staff. We would like to extend this program to patrons of all ages. Many of our adult patrons and teenagers aged 18 to 19 have a prohibitive amount of fees, and are experiencing life challenges that put our current payment plans out of reach for them. As with the original Read It Off program, our goal is to provide them with a pathway to accessing library services that is firmly rooted in and dependent upon building a successful and responsible checkout record, and again, those positive interactions with library staff. The program is designed to reach these goals while limiting liability to the library. Tag team.
Thanks, Kevin. In case some of you folks aren't familiar with, or haven't heard about in a while, how the Read It Off program functions, I just want to briefly touch on how it works, and how it would work as the care fee option program. A blocked patron comes and talks to staff either over the phone, or at one of the service points, explains their situation with their account, and we usually suggest during this initial conversation, at the point of checkout, that they sign up for the care program. They're then allowed to, the status of their account changes, and they're allowed to check out one item at a time. When they return each item, we waive $10 from their total fee. That's one of the fee changes that Marilyn indicated earlier. So, when the, there's a lot of interaction that happens there, once, starting with when we described the program. And then, when the patron returns their item, they don't put it in the slot. Rather, they take it to the service point, say that they're enrolled in the care program, and staff check the item in and make the wave. At this point, often, staff can have a conversation with the patron, engage in reader's advisory, or viewer's advisory, answer questions about our procedures, and that happens again, and again, and again, until their account balance is clear. So, it does limit the liability by keeping it at one checkout at a time. Also, in order to prevent abuse of the program, and just re-enrolling and running up fines and re-enrolling, patrons can only enroll once every six months after clearing their account. So, the other change is that while the original Read It Off program was limited to books only, and really sort of had more of an educational thrust to it because of its focus on children, at this point, we'd like to expand it to all media in an effort, both to promote use of the program with teens, but also to develop digital literacy skills within the community. The $5 to $10 increase in the wave, we just recognize that there have been a lot of changes since we started the Read It Off program. And $5 isn't really what it was in 2008. The $10 wave for successful circulation, we think will promote greater use of the program, especially among teens, as many of you are probably familiar with. So, those are basically the nuts and bolts of it. It's a program that's been really successful for a long time. We have developed a lot of relationships. It has been tough for Kevin, and I'm grateful that he pushed for that. But it would also represent a real streamlining of the way that we handle relationships with patrons who are in a situation where payments are prohibitive. Right now, that's a slower process. They get referred to managers. We have long conversations with them, try to work out a payment plan, which often, there's consistency issues with that. And it involves waves, anyway, depending on the earnestness or the behaviors of the patron. So, we're pretty excited about it. Do you have any questions?
Could you explain a little more, you talked about physical and digital materials. How would that work with the patron being able to build that relationship and have that conversation with the digital materials?
Right. So, it still does, we're not actually talking about circulating something that you just stream, or that's virtual. We did wrestle with that. But we're actually talking about altering sort of practices and behaviors that have to do with digital materials that are still physical, that have to be carried in and out of the library and taken home. Thank you for bringing that up. I kind of glossed over that before. So, DVDs, software that we have, library of things items that we're promoting now. Yeah, yeah. We did. We really did look at, can we count streaming if you check out a hoopla? Well, that's automatically checked back in, so yeah.
That was what went through my mind. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you both. This sounds like a great change. I just have a technical question on the document I'm looking at on page 43. Looks like all the, I see all the Read It Off stuff deleted with the Care Free, Care Fee program underneath, but that just talks about getting credit for checking out and returning. Is reading off still an option?
It's a single program for all ages, so reading still is an option. We've just changed the name because for reading, that was when it was just children. So, it's Care Fee Option Program now. We tripped ourselves up working on this as well. And that includes children, teens, and adults, whether they're reading or checking out software.
Okay. Because unless I'm missing it, I don't see anything in the Care Fee Option Program about reading to remove the fees. It just says, patrons may choose to enroll in a borrowing program in lieu of, so.
Yes.
So, that's true. So, are you suggesting that if we, that if we were a little more explicit, that said borrowing of physical items, including books, or something like that, and reading, and/or using?
I guess my understanding is that since they're having those conversations, and the idea with the Read It Off program, if I'm mistaken, was that they would check out a book, and then when they returned it, they would talk to the staff about it, so that, building the relationship, so they're still kind of doing the same thing, just?
Yeah, the thing that trips us up is that it's not necessarily reading. Reading is certainly a component of it, but it's not, but it may not be reading.
What the Read It Off program, it sounded like, was mainly about, was building the interactions and the relationships.
And the positive behaviors.
Yeah.
There were misconceptions about that early on as well, because many patrons and their caregivers approached us and said, you know, with an expectation that they had to deliver a book report on the item that they had read. And in fact, we just wanted to say, did you like it? Did you not like it? If you didn't, that's fine. Let's find something else. The emphasis was really on the circulation behavior and the relationship building there.
Okay, that makes sense. So, I guess I withdraw my suggestion of changing the wording. I kind of thought they were, it was a new program with two options, you know, reading and talking about that, or the building the circulation record, but it's really one thing. Yeah?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you both.
Josh, you can stay there.
Next is Proposed 2021/23 Strategic Plan. We have a nice new report in our packet.
We do, and in fact, yes, it's right here for all of you to see as well. So, just to give you an overview of this, we've talked about it last month as well, but the state requires us to create a long-range plan that's either three or five years in length, and we have created a three-year plan that, the last two times. So, the current strategic plan that we have expires at the end of this month. So, this one will be from 2021 to 2023. And one of the major components of this is that we, we reach out and engage with the community to find out the things that would be most important to them, from the perspective of providing services and/or programs, and just being a good public community partner. And so, we have done that, and the state also requires a variety of other pieces to be included in the report, including a technology plan, information about the building of facilities, evaluation, et cetera. So, all of those things are included in this. They were not necessarily parts of the draft that you saw last week, but this is the whole thing. When this is approved by the board, it will go to the state library, where they would then approve it, and it will be part of meeting our public library standards. And so, Josh is gonna describe a bit more about the specific things that we have, we learned through the community, and the actions that we intend to take.
Thank you, Marilyn. I was up here, I think, the month before last, talking about our changes to the mission, vision, and values, and some of the rationale behind those changes. Today, I would like to talk a little bit about the specifics that we added to the action plan for 2021. It is a three-year plan, but we recognized before we did the last one, that by the end of the second year, or maybe even halfway through it, some of our tasks are outdated. And certainly, at the pace that we're moving nowadays, we didn't want to look beyond a year, as far as the actual actions that we put in. So, some of the actions for 2021, if you look, I think they're on page 14. Some of those were on our 2020 plan, but were put on hold because of the upheavals this year. And many others were based on that input that we received from the community that Marilyn mentioned. In order to decide what to include in this year's plan, members of the leadership team, they met with their core staff, or communicated remotely, as was often necessary. And then the leadership teams met together a couple times to kind of hammer out the details. There's a lot here. I think Chris's van is on there, but I'll quickly just review a couple of the examples. A big one is to facilitate continuous improvement discussions and implementation plans. You're gonna be hearing more about this in the coming months. While we were looking outward and talking to members of the community and gathering survey information, we've also been looking inward all this last year, and thinking about our own inner workings and structural things. So, we took input from all of our staff across the system in peer-led discussions on Staff Day back in February. And the themes that emerged from that were primarily about communication, how we define our roles, how we approach training and orienting new and experienced staff. So, the work we're gonna be doing on this action item over the course of the year will implement, or will influence, a lot of our outward-facing work. There's another action item on there about revising how hiring and onboarding of staff and training of staff, that will be impacted by continuous improvement. Reviewing our partnership and program planning procedures and that workflow will probably also as well. But if you look at some of the ones from the external, or some of the action items that were influenced by our external input, those actions were ripped right out of what we heard from our surveys and from our stakeholder meetings. A lot of requests for, to support remote learning. So, we have developing multiple online reading challenges using Beanstack, developing new educational kits to support learning to read, strengthening service to homeschooling and other online learners, a lot of online learners via programming, and an update to the parent-teacher resource collection. It's also very important to us to increase our, public's awareness of our programs and services. We got a lot of interesting feedback, just from people saying, I didn't know you do this much, or I don't know what you do. I want to learn more. So, we're gonna be revising that pretty intensely this year. And then, one other one I just wanted to draw your attention to was to lead continued planning and implementation of pandemic recovery efforts. This is a really, sort of a commitment at the admin level, to work with community partners to support the challenges that we're all facing right now, to talk to local agencies, health and government, to ensure that the community stays safe, and that we can support that, and the library stays safe as well. So, that's keeping that adaptive piece in mind that really became part of our mission, vision, and values. There's a lot of them on there. If you guys have questions about specific action items, I can try to answer them.
That says refocus the children, general children's room at Ellisville for school-aged children. What is that?
That came out of Children's Services, and I wish Lisa was here to answer it, but the, we have, we have this beautiful new Ellisville children's space, and the lovely preschool room. The one that wasn't renovated very recently out where the nonfiction is and the juvenile chapter books and stuff, we have a, since Ms. Stephanie left us, we have a really great children's librarian whose focus is on tweens and early elementary ages. And she's looking at ways we can make that a more attractive destination for those ages. Traditionally, that's an age when you lose patrons for a little while. You've got them when they're preschoolers, because they're not in control, and now we've got them with the teen center. But she's developing a lot of new programs and services, and with an eye towards how to make it in the space and make it really attractive. That's Kim Baker, by the way.
Any other questions on the action items, or anything else with the strategic plan?
Appendix C and Appendix D are not attached to the paper. It's just a link here, right?
Is not attached to the report, you mean?
Is not attached to the paper? Because I think, yeah.
They will be included in the report to the state. They are requirements.
Okay. Yeah, they're linked, but it's not on a print, but I just wanted to make sure it was going to the state.
It will, yes.
Okay, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Josh, and to everybody who worked on this really comprehensive plan. It's now time for public comment. If any members of the public would like to share their thoughts with us, please come to the podium, state your name, and tell us what you're thinking. Are we testing anything with the?
Well, I guess, how did it work? All those people on Zoom. You saw us, okay?
What is our procedure for that? Would they type their name in the chat, and we could call on them?
Like, for their turn to speak? Would they do their hand raise, so we know that they had a comment? What, because there is like the little icon where, you know, it shows like I have something to say.
When we came to this, to this section of public comment, then I think we would just, we would just describe what we wanted a person to do, to raise their hand in, or
Or type in their name, okay.
Right, right.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. We're adjourned. The board has executive session. Is it upstairs?
It's in the boardroom on the third floor.
Yes.